Anything we got changed, then we can get it adopted.
Get it after Christmas at seven AM.
Okay, well, then we should just get it done.
Oh, wow. Gotta get it done.
That's all right. We can get it on the agenda and adopt it.
Done all the deductible this year.
We use those most places.
December is always quiet?
Yeah. Except for Mounds, yeah. It's Mounds.
Yeah.
Instead of twenty people, they have ten. There's a group that usually shows up.
Okay, city council meeting for December the twelfth, twenty twenty-three. And we will start by doing the pledge of allegiance. If you'll stand, remove your headgear.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with council members. Lee Scholender. Kim Helgason. Mary Bailey is absent. Molly Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Hank is here. City Administrator Mark Balsing. City Engineer Derek here. Got away with that one. And city attorney Scott Riggs. Okay, and we do have various public works, police department, and city staff members in presence. So, got that out of the way. We will go to citizens' comments. Are there any in particular that is here? I did get a call from Todd Gressit, city county commissioner. He wished to be here tonight, but he is under the weather. I did see him earlier, and I know he was. And he wished everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and hope the best for going forth in twenty twenty-four. That's what he told me. So, that's how it goes, okay? No more citizens' comments? We'll pass it on. Adopt the agenda. Mark, is there anything to be changed?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Okay, I will second that then. Any other questions on it? If not, all of those in favor of adopting the agenda as it, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass, okay? Okay, we can go with consent the agenda. Approval of the minutes and appointments, and also financial. We can do that in one motion if we have.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, the minutes, and the financials.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made. Second. For consent agenda, approval of the minutes and appointments, and financial as one. All of those in favor of the motion, we please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass, okay? Moving right along now. Presentations, public hearings, reclamation and proclamations. Are there any? None? Okay, we're really speeding along. Well, we'll get into the next down of it then, which will be engineering. And Derek, would you like to take over at that, please?
Mayor, good evening, everyone. This week tonight, we have our final pay application for the twenty-three street improvements project. The contractor, BMI, is now done with their punch list work, plus just one item that I needed to confirm. So, just here requesting approval of the final pay application number three contingent upon them submitting their final. Questions on the status of that project?
You said the one thing that you're still waiting for? It's just their final paperwork?
Yeah, closed-out paperwork, and there's one other little thing that they gotta clean up that I put in the question. If you approve it contingent upon submission of their.
I'll make a motion to approve the pay estimate three to its materials in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars forty-seven cents contingent upon submit to close out documentation.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more questions on it? Not? Motion has been made. Second to approve the pay request number three for BMI for eleven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, four hundred and fifty dollars and forty-seven cents. Those in favor of the motion, will you please say aye?
Aye.
Ayes pass. We'll pay him.
And just a quick update on the Pearl Creek sewer project. When I wrote my shirt and suite letter here, I was told that they were wanting to be done for the year, probably about half hour later, they called me and said they're gonna be working during the street. The electrical contractors out there right now, they're just going to do a little bit of conduit and wiring installation while the weather stays around here. Nothing too major, but it was. This weekend. I don't have any payable work for this month.
So, that's it? Okay, thank you there, Derek. Okay, we will go on then with legal.
Yeah, you have nothing on the agenda tonight, just an update that you will have the tobacco ordinance update that Mark and Jeff have. And if they've got any comments, let me know, but that'll come on next meeting for adoption. Amending ordinances, bringing in more current, so you've got easier enforcement capabilities. And that's it.
Okay. Okay, then we can move on with O business, which will, item A is a twenty twenty-four budget and levy. And number, item one is approved an increase of up to three dollars per hour for part-time staff. Mark?
Yeah, you should have approval. Recommended approval of increase of two dollars an hour for muni manager plus the cost of living and three dollars an hour, up to three dollars an hour for part-time muni staff. These items were included in the twenty twenty-four budget with no change to the bottom line of the budget. We get a motion for that. There's three items related to budget tonight that we're asking for approval, and this is the first one.
And you want each one of those done as the motion, is that correct? Okay, do you wanna, is there any question on where the money is going and how it came about?
I have a question. I guess when we discussed the budget before, I don't recall that we addressed anything as far as the managers' fees. And I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around it to figure out. Two dollars to me seems like an awful big jump. I've never heard of like that unless it would be like a advancement of a position in like most companies or that. So, I'm just curious how you came up with the two dollars.
Okay, so when Melty was here for that meeting at the end of November, he had asked for the staff. But then after, you know, we talked in the past that during the pandemic that we were gonna try to see what we could do to help you know, that position out because it's salaried. And really, we haven't had a lot of maybe room in the budget per se until maybe the last year or two. So, in looking at the budget between myself and Whitney, between him, you know, increasing some of the prices for our, you know, off sale and on sale liquor. We also found a couple of areas in there we could move some things around. And so, this is something I'm asking the council for because I feel he's worked hard and you know, I'd like to look at some kind of additional increase for him for that position, so.
Okay, I guess I was just, I know he talked about increasing the prices and that, but I guess I I was just thinking that was just regarding the bartenders, not his position. So, I would have been nice to have that kind of lead out as well, but.
If it makes you feel any better, and I will agree with you, we did have a muni liquor meeting Thursday. And when I read this here, when I went through everything, I did not, it was not discussed Thursday that I recall absolutely nothing discussed about it, and it was brought up on our, in the, that we got. So, I questioned and wondering what he was going to get myself, but I never did bring it up. I just didn't. So, apparently, Mark, you brought that up since Thursday, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, it was. We looked at the budget again and felt that there was enough room in there to add, probably actually more than this, but to add two dollars an hour plus the cost of living to both. Eighty cents, I believe.
Well, I was gonna ask you, but I won't ask it right now, but I was uninterested in knowing what his hourly wage was. I know it's salary. That's not digging, but I mean, I think it's kind of a, it came in behind the scene, and that part of it I don't like.
Yeah, it, well, we didn't have the budget completely done. I mean, on Thursday, when we looked for Friday, we looked at the budget again. Whitney brought me the areas we could move.
So, was his salary, since COVID, it hasn't, he hasn't had any raise in the salary? Is that?
Cost of living. Basically, yeah, there's been no supplemental. A lot of other positions have gotten two dollar an hour raises or three dollar an hour raises. Kind of like inflationary adjustment raises, you know, I call them. So, but this position never did.
Yeah, I'm, myself personally, I'm not against the two dollars. It's the idea behind it that has gone on. And the three dollars we discussed, you know, for the part-timers, they're, they're not. That makes sense. It's not popping up to three dollars. You might want to explain a little bit more to the council as to how the steps are going to be so that they know. And whoever's listening to this.
Here, the, there's a step in cost of living increase. So, this would basically go, all the steps are gonna be adjusted with this salary study. So, I can refer back to the old study, but by next year, that's gonna be you know, oh, it's gonna be gone. So, it's gonna be basically each step. If he successfully completes his, you know, review, there's step, and then there's cost of living is how the steps have been in the.
You mean for the part-timers or for?
For full-time.
Oh, I was wondering about the part-time is what I was talking about, because there's some. Yeah, well, Melty had mentioned about bringing a couple of them up right away that have been there long term. And that, which I fully agree with, and I think. Lee, you were there.
Yeah, I.
I think you should have.
Yeah, and we talked about, and I want to make sure this is clear, that we talked about raises up to three dollars an hour. That's depending on what the management says and years of service and so forth. I don't want anyone thinking that, oh, good, tomorrow I get an automatic three dollar raise. Not what this says.
Yeah.
We talked about longevity. Some staff have not gotten raises in a long, long time. And Mr. Bartel had stated that a lot of our staff are really underpaid compared to other establishments in our area too. And I know they get tips and so forth as well, but yeah, I don't recall ever having the discussion about Mr. Bartel's salary going up either. I, he earns his money. I'm not saying she certainly would not, would not get that or deserve it. I just, it's just the first I saw it too.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm, I have no problem with that myself, but it's just the idea that it comes in behind the scenes, and that I don't like. I want it up front. So, that everybody knows that what's going on. So, okay?
So, again, we have to do all three of these separate.
Correct.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the increase to two dollars for the muni manager and up to three dollars per hour for the full-time muni staff.
Is there any questions on it? We need to, I'll second that one then. So, there has been then a motion made and approved for an increase of up to three dollars per hour for part-time staff and two, two dollars an hour for muni manager. So, those in favor of the motion, say aye, please.
Aye.
Ayes pass. Okay, eliminate administration assistant position, funding moved to full-time officers. Now, I think probably Mark or Jeff, whichever one.
Well, this was talked about during the
Last meeting.
Last work session.
Yeah.
Special meeting. So, Chief, I don't know if you have anything else.
Okay. I'm gonna just add a couple of things here. We fought really long and hard for that position. And the fact that we're eliminating it, while I understand the chief's reasoning for it, and I'm not questioning that at all, it pains me that we're losing a city staff member. We're a small, small city. These people become kind of our family and our friends, and to eliminate a position, it, I don't take that lightly. Again, I see where the chief is coming from, wanting to save some money towards other payroll expenses. I get that. But losing that position, I really hope that we've given that some serious, serious thought. When we came back to Bureau of Police Department, one of the big things that we wanted to do, and I'm not saying anything negative with our former law enforcement coverage, this is not that, but I'm telling you what I heard when I first came here to work is people were really, really excited that we were approachable, we were easily found, easily seen. They liked seeing our name on the cars and stuff like that. And they really liked that kind of open-door feel, being able to come in and talk to somebody. I liked about having it being a non-sworn person is I think at times you can have that level of maybe fear or distrust if you have to come in and speak to someone like the chief or Officer Holmeyer or somebody, not that they're bad people, but I think that uniform gives you that fear sometimes. And having a plainclothes person who's non-sworn, sitting in a chair, can disarm some of that. So, that was my two cents on that. And again, I'm sad that we are looking to lose a position, but I understand where it's coming from. That was my two cents worth.
I think this is one of them that we did not want to bring forward, but we need to make a decision on this.
I also wanted to ask that, have we, again, this is a city staff member who's also a veteran. Now, I'm trying to separate the person from the position, but in this case, this person is a veteran. I hope the city has looked at any and all avenues to maybe keep them employed, if that's a possibility in some capacity, if that's what they choose to do. So, because I don't want to set a precedence for this, so I'm hoping those avenues have been looked at. All right, there we go.
Any more discussion on it? Need to move on this one way or the other. I don't think we're gonna move on, so I'll make the first part of it. I agree with you, what you're saying, Lee. But it is something, I don't always agree with everything that goes on, but I do think this is one of them that we need to make the motion on to eliminate administrator assistant position. We will need a motion to second on it if somebody wishes.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
No, and I agree. I'm a hundred percent. I it's extremely hard when you're in a small town to take the person out of the position. But in the end, it comes down to the responsibilities that are needed and the decision that needs to be made on those responsibilities, that they can be covered. And the reasoning behind it, I fully support because in the end, we need to we need to keep staff in our police department here, and it's really tough. That's my two cents.
Yeah, we're taking a veteran. We're also taking money that's earned and stays right here in town, person that lives right here. I honestly have given some midnight oil on this one a couple of times already, and I'm sure the rest of you have too. Okay, a motion has been made. A second to eliminate administration assistant position. Those in favor of the motion, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Neat.
Opposed? Okay, that motion does pass. Item three, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, adopting the twenty twenty-four budget and establishing tax levy for payable twenty twenty-four. Mark, I believe that's yours.
Yeah, I really don't have anything else. We had no public comment at the truth in taxation meeting on December fifth. The final budget shows a maximum profit level increase of eight percent for twenty-four. So, that's about, that's what our, my recommendation would be, would be keep that at eight percent.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any more questions on it? Okay, there has been motion made. Second for resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, adopting the twenty-four budget and establishing a tax levy for payable twenty twenty-four. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass. Okay, going on to item B then, purchase of Scooby equipment and compressor, which is the fire department. Is there any questions on that, or has anybody got anything to say on it? If you do, Wayne, bring it up, step up here so we can all hear it.
So, it's the same thing we've been talking about forever, updating our SCBA packs. One kind of goes with the other because the air packs is forty-five hundred PSI. So, we have to have the compressor to compress the fire. So, the money for the compressor would come from the bulk money with our half, the specific things that it hit on December twenty-sixth. It would be a two grand up towards that. The big parts, the air packs, plus the money that you've already fundraised, we fundraised about thirty-seven thousand dollars. And then, so we're asking to dig the rest of the money out of capital to purchase the air packs that's here. And then let's kind of bring on the hardships also.
Hold up. SCBA equipment and the compressor combined would be a hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. So, the fire department's requesting you staff the bug safety, which is forty-two thousand. And they've raised thirty-seven thousand in donations. The remaining amount of the purchase price would be seventy-seven thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. Out of the fire department capital fund, which could come out of the fire department capital fund which currently has a approximate balance of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made. Second. Purchase of Scooby equipment and compressor for the fire department. Any more questions on it? Not, we'll vote on it. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass. Okay, the next one is the community entrance sign final design.
So, this is just an update on Derek has been working with Bin Dot on getting the final design and getting the permit approved. So, there was a rendering in the packet. Seated and updated.
Yeah, so we had a small handful of revisions after last month's meeting. You guys all saw this, this went out. Sign's a little bit taller and made some minor changes to the aesthetics of the sign. Main thing that we're looking for here tonight, if you have any concerns with the rendering that you see here in front of you. We'd like to know those because the next step is planned. There's a small change to the price as expected because of some of these modifications, most of which was because we made the sign taller. About a foot taller, so more of that stone all the way around it. And then added two of the changeable signs. So, the new price is around twenty-one thousand. It's about two million dollars. Seemed reasonable. So, again, here we're just looking for comments that you may have.
What was sent out was there was three different items, about one of them was a star or a rose?
We left the rose. Yeah, that was the, so the.
I don't see it. Am I?
Just where the bottom, it's, it's, so the city logo at the bottom of the.
I got it, yeah.
So, we left the rose in as you commented.
Okay.
I like the, the red outline around the white for the bullet red of roses. That really pops.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We'll take that and let it know. They said that they would work this winter here. We need to get approval from Bin Dot before he does that. So, we think that he's gonna start in the winter, but if there's a hard breeze next week.
You mean it's gonna get cold?
Sometime, apparently.
Derek, any idea on how long Bin Dot approval takes? Is it?
I have. The agreement's altogether, there's need to sign it, but it needs to go up to someone at the central office.
Okay, thank you.
Is there gonna be a motion on that? Okay. Okay, very good. Information-wise only. Okay. Well, Jared. Item D then, we can go to that, is muni roof and flooring replacement. Mark, are you gonna take that?
The liquor committee meeting on Wednesday, liquor committee did talk about the muni roof and flooring replacement. And what we talked about was trying to pay for it. And this is again information tonight, pay for it through a loan with KMU. Between the roof and flooring right now, we're probably somewhere between seventy and eighty thousand based on the quotes that we've gotten so far. And I'm working on getting another flooring quote. Roofing quotes have been very hard to come by. These numbers we received over the summer more still just seem really high in me. That's what we have. So, it's just information right now, but we talked about if we get further along, if we get another quote, then we'll probably come back to the January council meeting. Further along, if we get another quote, then we'll probably come back to the January council meeting for kind of approval for this. Um, but we're gonna talk with KMU commission next week about it. So it's just basically now information, you have copies of the quotes that we have received in the packet. I don't know if there's any questions on any of that.
The flooring is going to be front door to back door, this entire?
Yeah, the whole place needs to be flooring, I mean, the back end of that place is like worse than the, the front, you know?
Yeah.
The front facing areas of the public car.
Don't believe it covered the cooler area, though, I think that was something different that was staying.
Yeah, I don't think they covered that, so we'll have to see about that.
No, that was like Mr. Bartel's office and everything, that would be the whole thing, except for the cooler area.
Mr. Bartel's office is on the pit angle.
It needs new flooring, it needs updating.
So anyway, that's just information at this point.
Okay. Well, then we can go into new business, you know, then, which is resolution twenty twenty-three. Dash thirty, resolution committing capital fund balance. Did I get it? Oh, here it is.
So, um, there is a general accounting standard, Gatsby standard, that requires all. Public entities to set year-end capital fund balances before the end of the current year, contingent on audited financial numbers. The final year-end capital fund amounts will not be known until after the twenty-three audit is completed. But we need a motion to authorize the committing of those funds. This is an annual thing that the council does every year.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty.
I'll second it.
Okay, any more questions on it? Has been a motion then made for a resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty. Resolution committing capital fund balance, those in favor of the motion, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass. Okay, item B is, uh, approve transfer of fire department year-end remaining funds to the capital fund.
Again, this is a. Um, this is done at the end of the year, every year by the council. To move the, um, remaining balance of the fire department. Balance to the capital fund. The actual transfer amount is determined again as part of the audit.
We gotta do these all three separate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry, I make a motion to approve the transfer of the fire department year-end remaining balance funds capital fund.
I'll second that.
Any more question? Not, motion been made, second to approve the transfer of fire department year-end remaining funds to the capital fund, all of those in favor of the motion, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass. Okay, item C, again, approve transfer of street maintenance year-end remaining funds to capital funds. I don't think there's a question on that. I'll make the motion on it.
I'll make that motion.
Well, I'll second it then. Okay, whatever.
Right over.
Little blacked out, huh? Okay, any questions on it? There are not, motion been made, then second to approve the transfer of street maintenance year-end remaining funds to the capital funds, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass. Okay, we're moving right along here. Item D. Twenty-four, twenty twenty-four sanitary and storm sewer rates, okay, that we need to discuss.
Okay, so we did talk about this at the. Meeting where we talked about the enterprise. Whitney went back and looked at the funds, the activity, uh, utility rate study that was done. Where these funds are at, it came up with a several year projection. One change that I will tell you that we're recommending now for that storm sewer maintenance fee is that being increased quite a bit. Right now, it's four oh three. And in order to get that. So that it's basically break, almost breaking even. This year, we're, we're recommending raising that to nine dollars. That's a per month fee per person. It's a flat fee. The sanitary rates, we talked about twelve percent, we're not changing that recommendation at all. But because we have some projects that are coming up, we have a couple of projects that, like. The second County Road twelve project. Second Street, or it's gonna be Langford Avenue, and County Road twelve, um, twenty twenty-five currently planned. That one does have a larger, some sewer that will end up on. Getting back to this one.
And then, you know, probably the biggest contributor after that was on down the line, but six. Um, it's a big outstanding need, and then there's some of those other miscellaneous projects, but still larger projects on that gap. Lots of needs that are coming up, but these, these utility rate adjustments were vital for those. So we took, where I'm looking at even larger increases at the time of the project.
And Sixth Street is coming faster because we're trying to get that, that grant from Min Dot. So we're proposing to move that up.
Yeah, we'll see what, uh, what the, you know, what happens with the grant, if we do get the grant and that one.
And that's not all of Sixth Street, that's just from spring to Houston, correct?
Yeah.
Reference these Langford Street. Up to twelve, is there gonna be any assessments to the homeowners for this stuff, do you know? Will be assessments for that?
We've started discussions, sorry, this is kind of a separate thing, but we started discussions with the county on that one. Um, in the coming months here, we're gonna have.
And which? Which one was that?
County Road twelve.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. Cause I believe, you know, when we were talking about, you know, the industrial park, they were talking, I thought they had mentioned twenty thirty.
Twenty twenty-five. Um, at one point, I think we had discussed doing that one in maybe twenty thirty, maybe it was twenty-eight. Uh, yeah, for some reason, that one's ringing a bell, but it's just been a matter of when can they fit, when, when can the county fit into the capital, with the plan they have plugged in. So that's the current plan. And again, here, we're gonna have, we've actually prepared quite a bit of information, we're not quite ready to present it, we will have that.
For?
For County Road twelve. Because that's gonna have to be a cooperative doing this project here.
Thank you.
So how much are we asking here, I'm looking at, uh, sanitary here. What is your figures on?
Sanitary, we're, uh, asking for the.
It's six sixty-one now.
Per thousand gallon rate and then the base rates. So there's, the first page shows the current rates. As of July, current year rates, and the second page shows the pulse rates for twenty-four. So.
Okay.
So going through each one of those separately.
There we go.
Sixty-one.
Yeah, yeah, seven forty, yeah.
Per thousand gallon rate, and then the base rates would go. From twenty-three forty-four to twenty-six twenty-five. Most of the, the vast majority of homes or properties are one inch service lines. So the one and a half and two and three, those are like commercial. So, but those also would go up accordingly twelve percent. And the stormwater maintenance fee is a larger increase than I would normally recommend, but because of these upcoming projects. More needs to come in. The funds sooner, so that we don't have to do even like larger increases next year. So.
The weather rate study done, two thousand plus more on storm rates. They had recommended at that point, they were able to get almost fifteen dollars per household. So we're trying to get to that twenty-three thousand, overwhelming systems that have these. You know, the last phase, it'll break it down in the years with just what we have in the restructuring with the bond payment. I don't know if you had that last placement.
Yeah.
So I can watch it a little bit. So with the rate increases that we have and the bond payment, less than appreciation from the. The bottom there, we're still not showing. Based on what we're expecting to bring in, which is the, not small, but. Sorry for anything. Just with the bond. Long overdue. And it's only a couple, couple dollars for the next year, so. Yeah, but then hopefully we can. Set it out and find a grant or something to help with the cost of things.
A lot of discussion about that this week.
Yeah.
Um, there's opportunities, this is, I mean, when we went through that project list, that was a, you know, a part of the discussions, they constantly look. Which we are, and that, you know, that, that grant application we talked about last month, that's, that's part of it, just, you're not gonna get all of them, but we gotta start trying. You know, with, with the sewer rates as well, remind you, one of the goals. Overall for the infrastructure system, to get our inflowing infiltration in the sanitary sewer under control is a big problem. Um, uh, attention to those through doing projects like. The Pearl Great Sewer Project, and then some upcoming, uh, sanitary sewer lining. Um, that's those, this rate increase, it's, it's vital for those projects.
We're actually still really focused on the other things. You're looking at bigger, not bigger, but the front center and back.
So do you need a motion on this?
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Would be, in fact, in January, if we, we send out notices with the utility bills, then it would go in effect, I believe, with January, after January fifteenth.
You know, if my, if I'm looking at it right. What I'm thinking is, by dollar increase for this year, twenty twenty-four. Two dollars the following year, two dollars the following year, another dollar then, that's, that's ten dollars in four years. I hope I get an increase in wages that fast, as ten dollars in four years, that's. I know we gotta do, we gotta do some work on it, but, uh. That's a lot. I don't know, the bottom line, I can see what it is here, but.
All right, I'll make the motion, we approve this.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Has been a motion made on twenty twenty-four sanitary and storm sewer rates. Uh, all of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm gonna say aye, because I can't quite go ten bucks in four years, so. It passed. Okay. Item E, twenty twenty-four tobacco license renewal. First one on it will be the Kenyon Market, okay, we can do all those at the same time, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve all of the tobacco license renewals. Twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Was it second, I didn't catch that. I'll make the motion then, did you?
I can second it.
The motion, please second it.
Okay. Got it, Mark?
Yep.
Okay, motion been made for twenty twenty-four tobacco license renewals at Kenyon Market, Riverside, River Country with Co-op, which is Speedway, and Kenyon Municipal Liquor Store. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass. Item F, Jacobson Law, request for an increase of fees for twenty twenty-four criminal prosecution contract.
Um, prosecuting attorney Jacob is requesting an increase in fees from eleven fifty to fourteen dollars a month. Um, he's making a request through the increased prosecution workload from the city. City seen a large increase in citations of related activity. Happy their quest letters at that. Oh chief, I don't know what's that.
I was a little bit, um, we need to have council, we call, no, no. We're dealing with COVID, so I didn't have a, we do a lot of meetings, here, from the court back then, um, the court did not transition back to.
It's probably true. David does a nice job, I, I actually brought him in in Manorville, um, so he does a nice job.
Yeah, I think we were his first contract.
Yes.
He's a local boy.
Yep.
Graduated from here, so I'm very proud of him.
Yep.
I'm very, very. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that one. Any questions, discussion on it, any further? Okay, item F is Jacobson Law. Request for an increase to fees of twenty twenty-four criminal prosecution contract, all those in favor of the motion, say aye please.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass. Okay, item G, which is adopt the state earned safe and sick time policy. Mark, or? John, you registered, which one are you?
Well, basically, this is a. Law that was passed in July. It requires now that all employees. Many employees that work over eighty hours. Accrue one hour of sick time for thirty hours work. So where this hits the city is part-time workers, um, mainly at the muni, but also maybe, um, also lifeguards. Will have to start accruing sick time. Um, the full-time workers under the city's personal policy accrue more than the state minimum, so that's not gonna change. So this just would affect part-timers that work over eighty hours.
Yeah, the biggest effect is on part-time employees, it, it almost, I'm not aware of any, certainly any entity that I represent, that it affects full-time employees, this was really. While, while it, it's broader based, it, it was meant to cover the part-time type employees. Provide some level of benefit. So if you're following what the statute is, you have to do it, so it's, it's pretty straightforward.
So what are they actually, what's it based on, what are, what are they gonna get out of this? Their hourly wage, um, or what? Their hourly wage, um, or what?
Well, they're gonna get allowable time to, to utilize for sick or other types of time off. Um, they're not gonna get a lot in most cases, but they will be allowed some.
On their dime or?
Hold on, it's, it's, it will be providing that. It's a benefit you will be providing.
Okay.
Mandated by the legislature.
Yeah.
Yeah, mandated by the legislature, correct.
Is that, this new law, is that with companies that do P T O time, or is it strictly have to be sick time? Only sick time. You know, some will just incorporate them together.
Yeah, it, it is, well, it isn't just sick time. It's broader based in that, so it's other time off for other purposes and, and needs like that. It's one of those laws that we talked about cannabis before, but it's one of those laws that, you know. Brought forth, it will be modified in the next year or two because everybody will go, why does it, is this so detailed? What, it probably doesn't have to be that detailed. But adopt what you've got, staff will implement as best we can, and then move from there, because next year it's probably gonna change a little bit. That's just the honest truth.
Okay.
We're following what's there. We're following what the League of Minnesota Cities gives us as guidance. And you're, you're basically. Lack of a better term, mandated to adopt it.
I mean, a shov down, that's real.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the state earned safe and sick time.
I'll second that.
Okay, most have been made. Second then for adopt state earn safe and sick time policy. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I guess we'll pass. Okay. Holiday office clothing, closing, I should say. Number one is city office library closed early on February, December twenty-two at noon. And we can, the library closed on Sun, Saturday, December the twenty-third. I'll make the motion on that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, those in favor of the motion of the holiday office closing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass, okay. Other business, schedule of upcoming meetings. K M U meeting Tuesday, December the nineteenth at four P M. Item number two is city council meeting will be Tuesday, January the ninth at seven P M. This is twenty twenty-four. Is there anything else to add to that? No comments or anything? Okay. Council and staff, general comments. Mark, do you wanna start it off?
Um, yeah, I just want to, uh, thank everybody involved with Christmas in Canyon. That was a awesome turnout. The events I went to were all, you know, a lot of attendance. And yeah, it was, it was really, really nice to see a lot of people participate. Thank Kim for all her efforts behind the scenes, getting a lot of that set up.
Derek, how about you?
Everyone a Merry Christmas. A good year. All of you. Even Scott here. Some downsides.
Johnny Riggs.
Uh, same, uh, ditto to what Derek said, although I don't enjoy working. Derek is a really.
Make a motion. Change his last name.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, that's, I understand that. But no, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year to everybody. I hope you have a great, uh, time with family.
Okay, well, we'll just follow on down. I'll say this here, you know, it's been an exciting, different year. Uh, twenty twenty-three, there's a lot of things that went through. Some we all agreed on, some we didn't all agree on, but that's the way it goes, so. I look forward to twenty twenty-four, and I will say this, which Mark had said. Uh, we did have two, I'm just saying, everybody worked at it, but we had two council members that I think did a. Heck of a job at Rosefest throughout the year, and I gotta say, Lee, you at the car show and all of the help that you had. I, have you ever speculated what's gonna, twenty twenty-four is gonna be like?
No, I take them as they come.
Okay, and Kim. You better spend some time at home once in a while instead of being busy, 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 but thank you. It has really made a marvelous change, and I will say this here. That getting out and talking to people and to businesses and that, your name has come up quite frequently with appreciation, so I'm telling you, thank you. Molly, I know you've been at it too, so what do you got to say?
Uh, I agree with everything that you said. You guys have done a great job. Uh, Christmas in Canyon is great. I came back through town in that, that morning. And wow, it was just fun to see the, uh, town hopping and Main Street was full and there's just a lot of people, so. Uh, and yeah, just happy holidays, everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Um, yeah, I, Christmas in Canyon was very well attended and. Got a little panic going in the morning when that snow started coming down. It was getting a little slick. I thought maybe people would tear away, but it, they still came and it was a great, great day, so I thank everybody that. Um, volunteered for the events and carried them through, and hopefully next year we can build on it again. Um, happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everybody else, and. Forward to another, another good year.
Lee.
Um, I wanna say thank you to Ms. Elgerson. You do so much work behind the scenes and it's appreciated. So Christmas in Canyon was. A huge success and a big part of it is because of all the work that you and other permanent people put into it, so it is greatly appreciated. Um, I wanna thank Ms. Bean for her years of service for our city, because I probably will be able to say that to her next year. And I wanna thank Wayne for all he's doing now, but the weather's getting a little icky out there. He's gonna get busier soon with callouts, and I want you to know that. I appreciate you and your crew getting called out at three o'clock in the morning and not getting home till the next day because you're keeping our streets. Clean and organized, and I appreciate all of that, so. Those are those saying. And Chief and Crew, thank you, because I know this is your busy time of year, so be careful out there with the slick roads and. Driving from call to call, so thank you all. And thank you, Ms. Kylo, for what you do. Great number crunching over there. Thank you. And happy holidays to everybody.
Anybody else got a comment out there? There's only three of you. Well, that brings up adjournment.
Motion for adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, most have been made and second the adjournment. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass, we're out of here.
Did you get a copy to agenda or anything?
Well, Scott, did you freeze?
It's a little cool here, yeah, that's why I tried to put the bag locked a little bit.
I thought I had it pretty well.
It's close, but yeah. He's aiming at back. Yeah, yeah, I tried to bounce it somewhere, but no, I got.
It couldn't really feel it now.
No, it was the eighty percent. I guess. One worse.